Board of Education Meeting 1563 is now called to order. Julia Voss is attending via telephone. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion by Mike?
Second.
Second by Kristi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And now we will stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. And if our special guests from Crestwood, Harper, and Valerie would like to come up and lead us in the pledge? Thank you. Tonight, we are recognizing Crestwood Elementary. And before we get there, I would, I want to take a moment to congratulate Crestwood Elementary for receiving sprout-level recognition through the Missouri Green Schools for their commitment to improving health and wellness of students and staff, lowering their environmental impact, and providing a place-based education. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Charity Schleter, Principal of Crestwood Elementary School.
One, there it is. I was waiting for that boom. I am so glad that all of you are here tonight. My name is Charity Schleter, and I am the principal at Crestwood Elementary School. Kit Norton, he is our assistant principal. Unfortunately, he is not able to join us this evening. We are absolutely honored to have this opportunity to share with you some individuals who make Crestwood such an incredible and special place. But before I get to that, I would like to say, we are a community where we value family. If you are a family member of Harper or Valerie, or our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Paffrath, could you please stand? We would like to recognize you. Woohoo! Thank you, thank you so very much. Harper and Valerie and Mrs. Paffrath are who they are because of you. We thank you for sharing them with us. At this time, I am going to begin by recognizing our two students from our school community that exemplify and represent our values at Crestwood Elementary. The first student I would like to honor and recognize is Harper Greenley. Come on up, Harper. Woohoo! Here, come this way. Oh, we're gonna go over here. You tell us, we'll, okay, we'll come over here. Harper is a fourth-grade student at Crestwood Elementary. And let's face the board. This is our Board of Education. They help run everything at Lindbergh Schools. And so I am gonna share with them how awesome and amazing you are. Sound good? Okay. Harper is an excellent student who enjoys learning and finding creative solutions to difficult problems. In the past, Harper has approached me with ideas about ways that we could improve areas within our school based on his observations. And they've been excellent ideas, Harper. He desires to make a difference in the world around him. For example, he has been a very active member of Crestwood Environmental Club and is dedicated to helping our environment and our community. And in fact, Harper is a part of the reason why our school has been identified as an honoree for our Missouri Green Schools Award. That's absolutely awesome. One example of this is when Harper came to our creek cleanup event, and he helped clean up the creek near our school. We appreciated your hard work, sir, and your dedication. That was awesome. Furthermore, Harper, and in fact, probably most importantly, Harper, you are very, very kind. You are a good friend to others, and you are always there to support a friend in need. You are inclusive, and you always make sure that everyone at our school feels like they belong. I think it's appropriate, in fact, this week is Unity Week at Lindbergh Schools, where we celebrate kindness. I think it's very important that we are celebrating you this week. We are so very proud of you, and tonight, we honor and recognize you for being an outstanding Crestwood Flyer. Keep up the good work. Woohoo! And this is Dr. Lake. Our next student that we are going to honor is Valerie Von Sally. Come on up, please. Can you stand over here? Oh, here, we're gonna stand this way, so we can face them. Valerie Von Sally, she is a fourth-grade student at our school, and she truly exemplifies what makes Crestwood Elementary such a special place. Valerie demonstrates leadership and integrity when our, within our school. One event that we have every year is Cultural Day. And this is a celebration at our school where we celebrate different traditions and customs of different countries that are represented within our school. It's such a special day to celebrate diversity in our school and community. Valerie was an important leader at Cultural Day. We did not have any older students or adults from Laos. Did I say it correctly? Awesome. Who were able to volunteer. So Valerie said she would lead that country for our students all day. And so what that meant is students came in. She talked about her country and the customs they have, and she shared that with, not one time, ladies and gentlemen, but ten times. We learned so much about your country, Valerie, and we appreciate you sharing your story with us. Thank you for sharing that. In addition, Valerie has also been a crucial part of our Crestwood Garden. I know everyone's probably heard about how awesome and amazing it is. If you haven't seen it, come check it out. Valerie and her family are a reason it's so awesome. They work so hard, and they were dedicated to make it the learning environment that it is for everyone in our school. You joined us on Bill Day, and that was incredible. And you're also a member of our garden club that maintains it and keep it, keeps it available to everyone. Valerie, I am so very proud of you. We are so very proud of you. And tonight, we honor and recognize you for being an outstanding Flyer. Keep up the good work.
Valerie, we have a certificate here for you, recognizing you as Student of the Month. That's for you. And then also, you get a wonderful shirt that says Flyer.
I bet Ms. Krueger will love that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. This is so much fun. I'm so proud of you all. Finally, I would like to honor and recognize our Crestwood Elementary 21-22 Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Lisa Paffrath. I do wanna just say, in addition to acknowledging all the family members of our awesome people that we are representing, our staff from Crestwood that has been able to join us, thank you. We talk about how Crestwood is a family, and you're part of it. So thank you so much for being here tonight. Mrs. Paffrath. So quite honestly, I could spend the rest of this evening talking about how amazing it is, but I was given a time limit, and I know we like to stick to those. Lisa, you are so incredibly deserving of this award. You are an exemplary educator in so very many ways. You are a leader within our school community and on your grade-level team. You serve on our Building Leadership Team, and you have this absolutely incredible talent and way of looking at very complex systematic problems and identifying solutions for our school that are workable. And I appreciate that about you so very much. You are always, always, always positive. You have a positive attitude, and it's contagious to everyone around you, everyone who works with you, and everyone who has the opportunity to be in your classroom. One of your greatest strengths is building relationships with your students, your families, and every single staff member at our school. You are genuine, and people respond to that. You have high expectations for your students, and you excel at creating meaningful learning opportunities that increase student engagement. And you, Lisa, are always willing to go above and beyond to meet the needs of every single student, and that's what makes Crestwood so incredible, and you exemplify that in every way. We appreciate you and everything that you do. There's so much that I know, as the principal, I don't see and don't even know about, but you are incredible, and I honor everything that you do behind closed doors. We appreciate it. Tonight, we honor and recognize you, that our school, quite frankly, wouldn't be what it is without you. We love you, Lisa.
All right, Lisa, so we have a certificate recognizing you as Teacher of the Year, but you get a $25 gift certificate from our online store to get all kinds of Lindberghs.
Woo! Thank you. Not here. Thank you.
Thank you, Crestwood. Congratulations. It's so nice to have people here to recognize your amazing work. At this time, we take a short break so that everyone who came for the recognition portion of our meeting can leave if they would like.
You're more than welcome to stay.
There's some exciting business, so.
We welcome all.
Five point O consent resolutions. We have three consent resolutions this evening. American Education Week Resolution, Success Ready Students Network System Design Zone Resolution, and Board of Education Student Representative Resolution. Do I have a motion to approve the consent resolutions as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Kathy, second by Megan. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. Six point O citizen communication regarding agenda items. We have none this evening, so we will move to seven point O communications. Ms. Vedder, calendar of events.
Thank you. Okay, so tomorrow is National Unity Day, and I believe a lot of schools are saying, let's wear orange in support of that. So if you can do that, great. Parent leadership will meet on October 20th, and the Strolling Strings will have their fall open dress rehearsal. Reminder that there is no school this Friday, the 21st, as well as Monday, the 24th, so enjoy your long weekend. On October 25th, the Teaching and Learning Advisory will meet. Middle school and high school fall orchestra concerts are on October 26th. November 1st is Parent Speaker Series. November 3rd is long elementary music concerts. And November 7th, Technology Board Advisory will meet. We have a lot, very busy, very busy. Then again, no school on November 8th. We have another advisory meeting for Facilities Board on November 9th, and then Student Life Board Advisory will meet on November 10th. We are already getting into elementary conferences, which will be November 14th through the 22nd. And then Finance Advisory meets on November 15th. And then lastly, we are back here on Thursday, November 17th, for our regular board meeting, followed by a candidate information session.
Thank you. Seven point zero two, report of meetings. Anyone who's attended any state or parent group meetings they'd like to share?
Jen and I attended the Safety Summit by Mr. Baker, our wonderful security director. And it seemed like it went well. He said the parent meeting part, he had more parents attend than he had expected, so I think that was great. And then we popped into the cybersecurity breakout session, which frightened me, frankly. But that's what it's there for, to educate us, right? So I think it was a good day. So appreciate that.
And I, since we were talking about Valerie, the student from Crestwood, I went to the Cultural Day that they had. And so I just wanted to give a big shout out to Crestwood, especially Mrs. Bridwell and Mr. Norton for making that such an awesome event, especially the collaboration between the middle school and high school kids being able to come in and represent their countries. And it was so fun to go into the classrooms and see the older students guiding the younger students on activities that are special and unique to their culture and to their homes. And it was just a really, really special day, and so I was excited to be a part of it, so great job.
Thanks. I did attend the SSD Governing Council meeting in September. A lot of the topics that were discussed at our last board meeting were then discussed there, but, you know, for the whole SSD as opposed to just Lindbergh. They've kind of done their goal-setting meetings with their superintendent and district administration. We kind of went over that partnership agreement and the general assurance document. And they've added a piece to our meeting at the end. We do them via Zoom now. And so at the end, they'll kind of do a breakout session so that we can meet with the board, the SSD board member that represents our district. So that's nice, and I think that'll add a layer of communication that is needed. So, yeah. Then we'll do seven point zero three announcements. Ms. Vedder.
Okay, it's that time of year again. Our candidate information session will hold that immediately following the regular Board of Education meeting on November 17th. So anybody interested, Lindbergh residents are encouraged to attend and learn more about becoming a member of Lindbergh Schools Board of Education. The filing will be for three seats, three-year terms on the, on the board. And the filing opens on Tuesday, December 6th, 2022, at 8:00 a.m. and closes at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 27th, 2022. So we have three-year terms for Matt Alonso, Kathy, Karla Lorenz, and Kristy Watts will expire. The ballot order of candidates who file on the first day of filing will be determined by random drawing. Candidates who file after the first day will be listed in order of filing. And for more specific information, please check out our public postings or visit the district's webpage.
Thank you. And I will be back to you for upcoming Board of Education meeting agendas.
Yes, I'm already tired of my own voice, so I apologize. We're scheduled to meet on Thursday, November 17th, for a regular meeting at 7:00 p.m. with the candidate information session immediately following. The agenda is currently being planned. At our regular meeting, we'll have employee medical, dental, vision, and life insurance renewal quotations, for the record reports on early childhood education program evaluation, regular business items such as human resources and financial reports. And for special recognitions, we will have Dressel Elementary.
Thank you. And now we have something for seven point zero five. We usually don't. Our oath of office for our new Board of Education Student Representative, Althea Bartswillis. And she is a senior at Lindbergh High School. So we'll go to listen.
So, you know, our student voice, and we always talk about everything we do is for our kids. And so we, as we always are looking at ways to bring student voice into our work, we had heard of a district or two that had student Board of Education members. And so we did some research. Dr. McKinney kind of led that for us, did some research. I think Clayton is kind of where we got the bulk of our information. And so we just felt like that was a good idea. As we do our work, and we are doing things that will impact our students, we want that student voice spoken into that work. And so we have selected two members to be a part of that. Kind of a board member in waiting to learn. And then we have a senior that will actually be getting ready to be sworn in. And I'll let, won't steal the thunder on names, but Althea is going to get sworn in here by Megan. So that's what's going on. And so we are super excited to have them be a part of our Board of Education.
Okay, so please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Althea Bartswillis.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will, to the best of my ability, faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a student representative of the Lindbergh School Board of Education of the State of Missouri.
And that I will, to the best of my ability, faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a student representative of the Lindbergh Schools Board of Education of the State of Missouri.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Adam, come on up here.
So, and we also would like to introduce our student representative in waiting, Adam Spree. He will attend the meetings. They will both attend the meetings this year and through his junior year, and will be, he will be sworn in next year as the student representative during his senior year, at which time we will have a new junior join. Welcome aboard, Althea. And I look forward to getting to know you better and hearing more about the student experience at the board table. And Colin, we will move on to the October MSBA report.
Welcome to the October edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at school safety. While physical safety and emergency planning often get a majority of the headlines, bullying continues to be the number-one issue reported to Missouri's anonymous school safety hotline, Courage to Report. As students are making steady gains in academic skills lost to the pandemic, parents and educators report that some students may have fallen behind in their social development. Safe and Sound Schools Executive Director, Michelle Gay, says that addressing all things that encompass school safety requires a comprehensive approach from schools and communities.
So we've created a comprehensive framework for school safety that really teaches making sure that you're attending to mental and behavioral health, health and wellness, physical safety and security, culture, climate, and community engagement, leadership, law, and policy, and operations and emergency management. That's a lot. We wouldn't expect everyone to know everything in all of those buckets, if you will, or those domains. But we hope that folks look at that and say, well, I do have a lot to offer in this area 'cause I'm a school nurse, or I'm a school counselor, or I'm an administrator, or I'm a school board member. There's something in there that we all kind of specialize in and are passionate about. And so we bring that to the table, we bring that to the team.
Michelle Gay chose to take action after losing her daughter in the Sandy Hook school tragedy. Since that time, she has focused her energy on improving all aspects of safety and security in schools and communities across the country. She admits that the ever continuing work of improving all things related to school safety is a difficult task.
The fact that it's hard work shouldn't deter us because good things are hard to do, good work is hard to do. But there are ways to do it. And one of those ways is to hold on to our inspiration, our kids. We do this work because of our kids and because they're our future. So not just because we love them and we're dedicated and devoted to them, but because they are our future. So keeping that in mind, and also remembering that we're not in this alone, we will find our way forward, we will build, and we will get better together, is something I think that's critically important for our schools and communities to hold on to during this time when it's all really hard work right now.
Former Columbine High School Principal Frank DeAngelis stressed that as school districts work on school safety plans, there is one key group that must be included.
I'll tell you, a lot of times, what ends up happening is you have people make decisions. And of course, we brought, you know, police officers in, we brought firefighters in, we brought psychologists and social workers, including our staff and parents. But don't underestimate the power of the students.
To find out more about the school safety information and resources available to your school, contact MSBA's Center for Education Safety. Michelle Gay and Frank DeAngelis will both be presenting at the 2022 Midwest School Safety Summit, to be held November 2nd and 3rd in Kansas City. The summit is presented in partnership with MSBA's Center for Education Safety and Safe and Sound Schools. Michelle and Frank will also be presenting together at the MSBA Annual Conference that is being held November 3rd through the 5th in Kansas City. The pair will be joined in the first general session by John McDonald, as they share personal experiences and valuable insights regarding school safety. Former NASA astronaut Dr. Bernard A. Harris Jr. will speak during the second general session, and Olympian Jackie Joyner-Kersey will be featured at the third general session and banquet. The conference also includes more than 90 concurrent sessions, a one-day education expo, and much more. Registration information for both the Midwest School Safety Summit and MSBA Annual Conference is available on the MSBA website. And be sure your school board is represented at the MSBA Fall Delegate Assembly, to be held on Friday, November 4th, in conjunction with the MSBA Annual Conference in Kansas City. The Delegate Assembly will be voting on position statements that will form the basis of MSBA's advocacy efforts during the coming year. Every MSBA-member school board is entitled to at least one voting delegate at the Delegate Assembly. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and thank you for all that you do to ensure all students succeed.
Thank you, Colin. We will move to eight point zero one cabinet updates, and we'll start with Dr. McKinney.
Thank you. Our committee met this, this month, and we talked about the continuing challenge of having enough substitute teachers in the district and staff attendance rates, shared some data with that advisory group, and had some good conversations around ideas that are being generated and some innovative practices we hope to put in place to help with that challenge.
Thank you. And Joelle?
Excuse me. Finance Committee met on Thursday last week, which is normally our meeting day, but we changed the date. The focus of the meeting was pretty much presentation of the audit. The district auditor attended the meeting. We did go through the finances as normal, but he presented the audit to the committee, and then all of the Lindbergh staff stepped out of the meeting. And the finance committee, you know, had a time with him to ask questions or anything that they wanted to know without our employees present. I have to say, we had a clean audit, and he was very, I have to thank Dawn Douglas, who was, who did 90% of the work at the audit, and my team. They got accolades from Keith on the audit this year. So it's in the board packet tonight for your final review, but it was a clean audit. And then the facility committee met for the first time with our new folks, and we talked about how the committee works, and we refreshed them on some things that had already been done in past years. Our focus this year will be putting together a list for a future prop.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Sparks?
So earlier tonight, you are earlier today in the board workshop, you heard us talk about the Infinite Campus transition. That was the focus of our Technology Board Advisory, where Computer Information Concepts, or CIC, who is the implementation arm for Infinite Campus, a student information system that we will be moving to next year, presented to the group. And then the group looked at a proposed timeline to implement Infinite Campus in the 23-24 school year, got some feedback, and really was helpful in finalizing that decision. The Teaching and Learning Board Advisory, because of just timelines, they don't meet it again until next week, so we'll focus on standards-based learning, the progress that we've had this year, the work we're continuing to do at the secondary level. And then our Student Life Board Advisory met last week. Had some great input about our social-emotional learning screeners from our students who have been a part of that process. They were very positive about the length of the, of the assessments, as well as the questions that were asked. So that was, that was helpful feedback. And then we really dug into our directory information. As you all know, each year, we have families fill out the annual online verification, and we made a change this year with directory information, and had some feedback about how it kind of limited options for families. So we looked at the challenges of how we can make a sustainable system that meets the diverse needs of families. So got some feedback on that, and we'll turn around and kind of draft out what that'll look like for the future and get further final input from the committee later.
Great, thank you. We have action items by consent, nine point zero one to nine point one three. Would anyone want to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve consent items nine point zero one to nine point one three? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve consent items 9.01 to 9.13?
So moved.
Motion by Matt?
Second.
Second by Megan. Any questions or discussion?
I want to make one comment on 9.13. You guys hear me pretty well?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to reiterate what Joelle said when she left the room, the auditor, when we were asking him questions, he was highly complimentary of both Joelle and Dawn. He may have called them the dynamic duo, or maybe that's just what I heard, but he was very, very complimentary and said we are lucky to have her, so I just wanted her to know that.
Thank you. Good job, Joelle. Anyone else with questions? All right, we'll move to our vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7 to 0. We have no individual action items this evening, so we'll move to 11.01 for the record. We have three for the record reports this evening, professional learning program evaluation, professional learning plan, and official enrollment. You can review these and contact Dr. Sparks or Dr. McKinney with any questions. And we will now move to 12.0 Citizen Communication Regarding Non-Agenda Items, which there are none. So we will, we have already conducted our executive session, so there is no need, so we will move to 15.0 Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn board meeting 1563?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Kathy. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Board meeting 1563 is adjourned.